This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for September 25th, 2018. I'm sorry about that. To begin this evening, as is our usual custom, we offer the opportunity for public participation. I remind members of the public who are here in attendance that you're free to address the board. You are also welcome if you would like to leave a question or a comment at the door coming in. You'll see that we have, in addition to the agendas, there are comment cards. If you'd like to leave a card with a question for a future answer, we were happy to take that also. For those of you that wish to speak tonight, we ask you to please come to the podium when recognized, give us your name and address. We ask that you please try to keep your comments to about three minutes and that you not mention or attempt to discuss any specific student or individual by name. So we welcome that participation. Is there anyone at this time that wishes to address the board this evening? Anybody here? Okay, seeing that we have none this evening, we will move on then. Board, may we have please a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Jaleen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. First up, a motion please for approval of minutes from the September 4th, 2018 meeting.
So moved, second.
Moved by Adrian and seconded by Christina. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions to those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This evening is the first scheduled principal reports for the year, so we're always anxious to get things started and kick that off. And we'll begin tonight with Council Rock and Principal Matt Tapp. Welcome. As Matt is walking up, I will remind those folks who may be watching us at home, on streaming or in a future rebroadcast or on the YouTube channel, all of the agenda material this evening, as always is the case, is posted online under the Board of Education tab, Meeting Agendas. So that includes the principal reports. Any additional material that we discuss tonight or modify tonight will be updated and all that material will remain available on the website. Matt, welcome.
Good evening and welcome. Happy 2018-2019 school year. So we have had a smooth, but I call it jagged, stop and start, but we are getting into the groove. First full week of school after many partial weeks. But our art teacher, not only did the beautiful drawings and things like that up there for Habits of Mind, continuing our Council Rock tradition, but she also took all the things, some art that our kids did at Play Day at the end of last year and turned it into the really cool art handprints and things all over the school. So their smile, happy, be kind, all kinds of really great things to welcome the kids back. But we are settling in, figuring out which doors they go in and everything that goes along with the beginning of school. My first read aloud for September is "All Are Welcome" by Alexandra Penfold. It's a really great story. I won't play it, but if you wanted to play it, you could play it. Just has a great message about whose responsibility it is to make sure that everyone feels welcome at our school. And we talked about that it's everyone's responsibility, mine, all the teachers, all of our parents, and most importantly, all of our students. So it's just a great, great to get us back into the groove. Last night was our last curriculum night, so we've had actually kindergarten first and second grade curriculum nights are all completed. Our first PTSA meeting with the principal was September 7th. Very well attended. I had over 50 people at that. We went over our Council Rock goals and just a general time for questions and answers. And we've continued with that format of Let's Chat Council Rock. So every other month, we about have Let's Chat Council Rock where we have a different topic. So hopefully we will see more and more people out. As I said, we are continuing with Habits of Mind and Mindset. Our four fall habits this fall are managing impulsivity, listening with understanding and empathy, responding with wonderment and awe, and taking responsible risks. So we will be talking about that. And if you want any more information, always available on our website. And then this year, we are starting, we will focus a part of our October Superintendent's Conference Day on our building goal, which is looking at incorporating purposeful play. So it's continue our developmentally appropriate goal from last year and really looking at how do we incorporate purposeful play into every day and playful learning and joyful learning. So we're looking forward to learning more about that and making sure that we're doing that for our youngest learners. Several awesome projects that have started already. So kindergarten across the board has been studying Pete the Cat. If you don't know Pete the Cat, written, or he's got a lot of great books, but they've been rocking out in their white shoes, their groovy buttons, and doing all kinds of things to welcome them to Council Rock and get them in the mood. Two of our first grade teachers, Mrs. Baker and Mrs. Files, participated in International Dot Day. And dot is, that is a book by Peter Reynolds. And it's all about creativity and making your mark. And they are participating in International Dot Day. Their kids all created these dots that are all over Council Rock. And they're very similar actually to the Fres kindness rocks. We're hoping that they not only stay at Council Rock, but they get spread all over town. And as you find them, you can register them at the hashtag MakeYourMarkMovementCRPS. And you can take a picture with them. So we're hoping that that spreads out. And it's just to make your mark in the world and make sure that you're spreading kindness. And then we had another first grade teacher, Llama Learning is happening here. And that is Lama Lama. If you've not read those books, they're great. So just a lot of connections to literature as we get into this. This particular teacher, Ms. O'Gorman, connected two students and then they interviewed each other. And these were available for parents to hear on curriculum nights. So just some great projects. Upcoming events, we start next Monday with our, believe it or not, winter wear clothing, trying to get a stock early to make sure that people who need it have it. So that's a PTSA clothing drive. Again, no school on Friday for Superintendent's Conference Day, next Friday, and then the following Monday for Columbus Day. Our school pictures will take place Wednesday and Thursday, the 10th and the 11th. We have our PTSA Book Fair, which is early this year. Normally it's in March, but it is from the 15th to the 19th in order to get ready for our author. Our kids don't know who the author is. Our librarian has been building up to that. And the big reveal for the author will be next week. So I'll be able to talk a little bit more about that. But the author will be coming on November 1st. I'll tell you that. October 22nd through the 26th is Red Ribbon Week, so I'll be detailing that in our next. And of course, our annual Halloween parades happen on the 31st, 9:45 in the morning and 1:30 in the afternoon. We'll be sending out more information as we get closer to that. So it's been a great start to the year. Any questions?
Sounds great, Matt. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks, man.
We look forward to the big reveal on the Halloween costumes also.
Oh, yeah, well.
Lots to come. Next up, we'll hear from French Road Elementary, Principal Allison Riem.
Hello, welcome back.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. So we started off our year with lots of happy, smiling kids, a beautiful day. We had, you know, welcoming all of our kids back and welcomed them back with some chah messages on the walkway into French Road. This was just a few of the examples that our teachers came out to write for kids, which was really cool. So as they got off the bus and headed into the classroom for the first day, they got to read messages from their teachers written outside. We had an awesome start for our teachers. Mrs. Bagnone and I cooked breakfast for them the first week. That was fun. First week of school, we had our PTSA back to school picnic. We had a great turnout again this year, a beautiful Friday night. The weather was great. We had families outside enjoying picnic, Tom Wall's food truck, just hanging out with each other, playground. We had our representatives from Impact Earth there, helping us to continue our mission with figuring out how to sort our waste. So that was really awesome that they were there too. But it was a very relaxing, fun night for everyone in the first week of school. I started my video newsletters this year. So this is a picture of some of the kids from Mrs. Pettit's class who were on the video newsletter with me last week. In addition to just highlighting the information that happens each week at French Road, trying to bring different kids in from all classrooms around the school to share what's going on and the learning that they're doing. So you can watch this online, but these three awesome kids were sharing about a STEM activity that they did. And they kind of went through the process of their thinking and what they learned and how they worked as a team. And they were really excited, even though it's just the four of us in the library recording this. They felt like they were on the Today Show. We had our first High Five Friday the second week of school. This was really exciting for our kids who are new to French Road and third grade kids, so who haven't experienced High Five Friday yet. Lots of staff members outside and in the hallways giving a lot of high fives. I went by the third grade door and the kids were so excited. They had no idea what was going on, but you have to start your day with a smile. So that's a picture of Mrs. McDonough's math class giving everyone a high five to the camera. So great day for the kids. Our third graders in all of the classrooms right now are working on metacognition and schema. And these are some examples of kids in Mrs. Tuft's class. They're reading Star Quality books to highlight the star qualities for our third graders, but also talking about their reading and thinking about their thinking. In this classroom, the kids were looking at a wordless picture book and trying to use their thinking to come up with what was happening in the book and why the character might be acting the way that he was. And that's been across the third grade. Third graders are using fancy words like metacognition and schema, which we love. And then across the entire school, we have, as expected, but it's been pretty awesome watching our kids do some different team building activities with their classes. Some of our fifth grade classrooms started using breakout EDU, which that little picture on the bottom right is a picture of this box that you can create any kind of activity with it. For the kids have to work as a team to solve kind of a mystery. And they have to unlock locks as they go and use clues to figure out the next step. And these are some kids from Mrs. Close's fifth grade class who were trying to figure out the clues to their team building activity. Our fifth grade is also starting off the year with a door decorating contest around growth mindset. This is a work in progress. We only have one door decorated so far. So stay tuned next time for more doors. But kids are coming up with the theme and doing the door on their own. But this is Mrs. Scottfried's classroom door. Ms. Lenovara's class was also doing some STEM activities for team building. And they had to build a pyramid without touching any of the cups with their hands. And they had to work with their new classmates to complete that challenge. They loved this, as you can see in the pictures. And they did, they were able to do it after they thought about it and problem solved and tried some different ways. Upcoming events for us, we have our third grade and special area curriculum night this week on Thursday from 6 to 8. And next week, on the 3rd, we have our fourth and fifth grade curriculum night. Our school pictures are on the 2nd and 3rd. A schedule will come out with specific teachers, so everyone knows when their child's picture is. We have no school on the 5th and the 8th. We do have a meeting with the principal coming up, which I'll chat more about soon on my weekly newsletter. But we'll be looking at the process for accelerated math and extended studies and trying to clarify and explain how that looks at Fres, especially for our third graders and new families to Fres. Fourth grade instrumental music night, extended studies family meeting, and lots of roller skating coming up at French Road after school. So I know the kids are already looking forward to that. And that's us in a nutshell. Any questions?
Fantastic.
Great.
Thank you, Allison. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
You know, it just doesn't take very long to be fully in the swing of things. It's amazing. Oh, that works. But thank you. Next up, 12 Corners Middle School, Rob Thomas.
Any questions?
We have a lot of questions, but.
Well, good evening, everybody. We started our first staff day with our annual picture. And it was a hot day, but we're looking cool in this picture. And it's displayed in our office already and in the showcase downstairs. Pretty proud of our staff. We welcome back our sixth graders before school started with orientations run by our TCMS mentors in the TCMS Strong Program, supervised by Caitlin O'Neal and Stacy Kugel. About 270 new sixth graders to the building and more 7th and 8th graders that are new to the building also had afternoon activities. They practiced their lockers, reviewed their schedules, and toured the building and spoke with the counselors. Big thanks to our PTSA for all they did the week before school and even the first day of school to help kids find their way, help with lockers and sell our PTSA calendars. We had a first ever opening day, almost opening day. It was actually the second day of school, Pepperelli, where all the staff and students came out to meet one another, to see all the staff. And even Dr. McGowan came up there and the kids loved it. One student wasn't too excited, but everybody else was very excited to see him up there.
He hasn't come around yet either. He's still not thrilled about getting in. He hears the Pepperelli daily, so he's.
Their sixth grade outdoor education program was in its 48th year. And Mr. Connelly had the kids believing that he'd been there for each one of them. All three teams spent two days at the Rush Rotary Sunshine Campus, an overnight experience. Over 60 teachers and even more parents were there to help run the activities, supervise the kids, and provide a great initial experience for the students as they enter the middle school. Our fall athletic participation is very high with 207 student athletes, 30 of whom are competing at the high school level. Fairly equal number of girls and boys and a little bit more in 8th than in 7th grade. But after one season, that's a good number of kids. And we look for the winter and spring to pick up as many as possible. Those activities, along with all of the Hairspray Musical with almost 60 students, our clubs, our performing groups, a lot of kids have something to do after school, which helps build that connection with our teachers and our staff. Upcoming Friday, we're going to be practicing the rest of our emergency response drills. We've been working on fire drills and have done a lot to improve the accountability and safety for all students during these drills. You're getting my weekly e-news at home. Please be sure to scan that and check for any pertinent information for you and your family. And remember that the morning show is archived at bcsd.org so that you can hear what your kids are hearing and forgetting to tell you when they get home. A lot of upcoming events, we have activity nights for all three grade levels. The first one's Friday night with 6th grade. And we ask that they bring their water bottle because we have the water filling stations now. We're going to save on cups as the zero waste initiative continues. Tomorrow night's our curriculum night. And you'll get eight periods in two hours, what your children experience over the course of two days, in about 20 periods. So bring your track shoes and a GPS device to find your way. We do have our TCMS Strong students helping with schedules and with directions. Parking is always an issue. Carpool if you can, arrive early, walk if you're in the neighborhood. But be sure to attend for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade tomorrow night. Our pictures for the school are Thursday and Friday during their English classes. It only takes about 10 minutes for a class and then they'll get right back into instruction. All the pictures are in the auditorium. The 8th graders are going to be participating in team building next Thursday, which is kind of like a outdoor education light to revamp and build that team concept in the 8th grade. Walker Bike to School Day is October 10th. And we'll send out reminders to the kids, the PTSA again is helping with that event. And we want to make sure that folks also remind their children about safe walking and biking rules in and around the 12 Corners area. We will notify the police, Brighton Police, to make sure they're aware that we'll probably have an increased ridership and walkers that day. Looking forward to our PTSA meeting on October 17th at 7:00 PM. I'll be reviewing the new grading policy that we're implementing at the middle school. We've sent home an e-news and we'll be focused tomorrow night on our curriculum night as well. And also talk a little bit about surviving the middle school and starting off the school year. And the last activity I've mentioned here is an author visit with Lori House Anderson on the 18th of October. A great chance for kids to see the author, listen to her, and learn more about the writing process. And that's it at the middle school. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Rob. We appreciate it. And wrapping up our principal reports this evening, Dr. Tom Hall in Brighton High School. Off camera, there's a lot of love for everybody getting back together here.
There totally is. All right, here we go. We're getting a little excited. We found what BitmoGs are. So we started having a little fun with this. The kids having fun with it. And we took this picture on the first day of school. And then there we go. Oops, there, there. We're just having a lot of fun with it. And it's just. We could tell. At the high school level, you know, you need to laugh once in a while. So there we go. We're going to find out which BitmoG best represents, you know, the actual face of the administrator. So we too, we also took our faculty photo, 2018-19. There they are. And there's going to be some department photos with their names under it, right out in front of the office. A lot of teachers who don't even know some of the other members of our departments trying to get a little bit more knowledge of who they are. We had our Link Crew. It's our fourth year of Link Crew. It's a national program to basically put together a welcome to our incoming freshman. Class of 2022, we love you. That was kind of the slogan being chanted in the gym that morning. There's our Link Crew leaders for the year. They'll be working with all the freshmen through the first semester. Once a week and various lessons that take place, the administrators will be coming and doing some character stuff in the next two cycles. We'll continue our transfer student process. We have about 40 new students this year. And every student, all 40, will be assigned a mentor, similar to what we started last year. Two to three one-on-one meetings with the student in the fall and spring. And then two to three phone calls home, personal phone calls, just to check in, see if there's any information that they have questions about, especially as the first five weeks come up. Things that are, you know, just a parent would have, being brand new to a district, brand new to how things operate. So looking forward to doing that again. We've had all of our opening week meetings. We've met with every single grade level, talked about all the expectations for the year, DAS, social media, and those things will be continuing into our meetings over the course of the year when we're meeting actually with 15 to 16, you know, students in the counseling seminars. And something we're definitely talking about always is safety, security. And if you see something, say something. The more research we do on that, the students are going to find out about something concerning or hear about it sooner than we will, whether it's social media or face to face. So just trying to put that message out there. I really think kids are starting to get that message. And we've already had several students come to us this year with items that they're just concerned about in terms of their friends or student safety. They're promoting our mission. A new thing this year, we started our Culture, Climate, Diversity, and Equity Student Leadership Team. All of these organizations, their club presidents, vice presidents, secretaries, and treasurers will meet with me once a month. And then we're going to meet as an entire group, at least every two months, to talk about the culture, climate of the high school and what similarities and differences each of these clubs and organizations go through and see where we can come to some agreements and where we might want to move forward as a school. And they're also going to help me develop the student survey for the spring when we give that out again this year. Homecoming, fantastic if you were there, part of it. We had, you know, our class murals, these are pictures from the murals. It was just this past weekend, but a lot of excitement, a lot of great enthusiasm. And it was a fairly fun week and uneventful for the most part, which is a good thing. We have a brand new course that you helped to support last year called Understanding Design. It's part of an art and tech course together. And we had actually a couple guests from, they're Brighton grads, who were running Crazy Dog t-shirts. They were the first group to really come in and work with the students on design of t-shirts and how it works with the art and the computer side of things. They got a free t-shirt, but they're also helping to design some of the new logos for Crazy Dog. So that was a real life experience with people coming in from the business world for this class. Our Urban Suburban Luncheon was just this last Friday. 35 students at BHS who are urban suburban, and we have eight seniors this year. Always a wonderful event. College application Mondays start already. We have our new seniors filling out the applications, getting going. That will go right through the end of December. Basically Mondays, 3 to 6, every Monday from now until the end of December, counselors are available after school in the computer labs. Club Expo tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday. Our PSAT is coming up in a couple weeks. Several parent nights coming up. Definitely want to be there if you're a 12th grade parent, for our 12th grade parent night and so on. Although we haven't gotten the official word, it was supposed to happen the first week of September. I'm hearing it might not happen till the end of this week, cross some fingers. But hopefully we'll be able to celebrate that and get the official 2018 from Brighton High School. But we're really excited about winning the Blue Ribbon Award again, or for the first time in the high school.
That's the most non-announcement announcement ever.
I can't officially publicly.
It's not from the federal government, so.
It's killing you, doctor. It's bubbling up.
They got a few other things going on, but I'm sure they'll get to us.
But hopefully we'll hear like the real news here soon. Thank you.
Just want to point out as we transition the next reports, both congratulations on that, which we can't wait to celebrate and actually officially announce it, when the Department of Education allows us to. And also congratulations to Carolyn Rabidou, being named Administrator of the Year by the New York Association of Office Professionals. So thank you.
Want to hug Carol?
Thank you, Tom. And to follow up a mention that you made, homecoming this past Saturday. And just on behalf of the Board of Education, I know Kevin will have some remarks, but thank you. Thank you so much to all of our high school folks, but our students especially. It was one of the best ever. I think the array of all four class floats and the number of students and teachers and staff participating seemed to all of us to be sort of at an all time high. It was a great event, a great community celebration. Our sincere thanks to Nelson and the entire Brighton Chamber of Commerce as really the main driver of that and co-sponsor, if you will. The Town of Brighton, Bill Mailey and the entire town board, Mark Henderson, Chief of Police, Mike Guyon, Highway Superintendent, for all of their efforts in getting all that 12 Corners area closed off and allowing us to use the area for the homecoming parade. And tremendous attendance, huge groups of families throughout the area from the morning through mid-afternoon. Highly successful barons effort on the football field. So it was just a great, great community celebration. So our appreciation to everyone involved in making that happen again this year. So thank you for bringing it up. And lots of great pictures. Dan took a whole set of photos that are online and available and just was just a great event again. So thank everybody involved in that. Next up today, we are going to cover this evening and bring everybody up to date on where we are on our construction management, our construction project situation. Tonight, we'll receive a construction management report and a couple of other reports on current situation and Mr. Lou Alimo.
Good evening. Tonight we have with us John Lindbeck and Gary Huffman from Campus Construction and Lynette Weiner from SWBR. Tonight, John Lindbeck is going to give you the monthly construction managers report. This will set the tone for the types of reports that the Board of Education and the public will receive on a monthly basis and outline some key components, things that were completed over the summer, where we are financially, and just really highlighting all the great work that was done over the summer. So I'll turn it over to John. Thank you.
It depends. We'll see. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and update everybody on where we're at. This is one of the slides that you guys will see on a very regular basis. We look at the total referendum value that we have for the project. The incidental budget, $10.3 million. The construction contingency is almost $3.4 million. And that's what we use for any unexpected costs, things that come up during the construction that we have to address. Right now, for the Phase 1 work that we did this past summer, we had a budget of $2.1 million. And we're preparing our contracts now for Phase 2, which would be French Road Elementary School, the 12 Corners Middle School, and the high school. And then we have the Council Rock Primary School contracts. We're preparing those bids to go out the first part of November. And we'll fill in the blanks when we get those back. This slide here is very important to us because it talks about our construction contingency budget. As I said before, we've got $3.3 million to work with over the total course of the projects. So far, we've got zero in approved change orders. If we get down into the next several bullets, the construction contract with the work that we did this summer is approximately 3% complete. And we've spent zero on the contingency budget. Right now, we're tracking 12 issues in our issue log. And I wanted to explain, at any point in time that we identify a situation where there's a potential impact to cost or schedule, we'll create an issue. And that's the vehicle that we use to track that through the investigation, what the costs might be. And it also helps us protect our budget because I've got $3.3 million to work with over the course of the project. And with the 12 issues that I'm tracking right now, they represent potentially $205,000 in change orders. And the bulk of our work this summer was site work. And site work is the most unrewarding way to spend money because of the $205,000, almost $96,000 went to unsuitable soils that we found when we excavated for the tennis courts. We had to dig out. We had to dig out, replace that earth before we could put the tennis courts in. So, it's money we spent that you don't see a lot of return for, but again, it's things that we had to address. So, that's something that, you know, we'll continue to monitor how close we are to completion on the project versus the budget that we're spending and keep reporting back to the district as to where we stand. What we were able to accomplish this past summer, the site work, we got the old turf off, regraded the field and installed the new turf surface. The good news there that the drainage that was existing was all in very good shape, and the pad that had been under the former field was also in very good shape. So, that was a plus. We got rid of the old tennis court, provided the new. Again, we did have the unsuitable soils there. We got new fencing in certain locations. We did repair and replace existing sections of drainage and asphalt, and that, again, represents some of the money we're tracking in issues. As we excavated for other work, we found sections of drainage that had been damaged previously, and all of those got improved as we went through with our other renovations. We did install the asphalt and the rubber surface on the running track and the pole vault approach. At the high school, we got two sections of roofing off and replaced those. There were several very poor wall sections up there. Those were all refaced with a new stucco-type finish. And at the middle school, we've got six new doors for the cafeteria. Doors and hardware run anywhere eight to 12 weeks, so those are on order. It's a two-day installation once they get in, and we work with the district to schedule those so it doesn't impact any programs. In addition to our Phase One work, we worked with the building and grounds supervisors. We were able to complete the following projects for the district. There was a new oil separator placed in-ground over at the building and grounds building. In the administration building here, we were able to put in a new and emergency PA system. We also updated all of the HVAC controls in this building. And at the high school, we got the solar demonstrator project up and running, and the district can now use that to monitor their electrical usage and the power they're getting off of those panels. And they use that with the students to look at different opportunities and track costs. We did get the 12 Corners Middle School chiller units replaced and new controls on those. Right now, that's in the punch list phase, but the units are running and performing as designed. And we just got news this past week that the high school ventilation project got the SED approval it needed. So, we'll be moving forward to put a bid together to get that out on the street. We still have one other project, and that's the ventilation upgrade for this building that is still at SED waiting to get approved. I've got probably 10 slides, and I'm not going to go into detail on all of them, but one of the activities we've been working with the district very closely over the past several weeks are what we call phasing plans. And we take the footprints of each one of the buildings, each one of the floors, and we start working out a system of when we want to perform this work during the capital project. We've got three summers to perform this work in. And again, working with the district so that we're not impacting programs, we schedule that work. And there's another benefit to these. These go into our contract documents, and it alerts the contractors to the schedules that we've got in place so they can plan their manpower. They have to plan funds over the next three years to do that. So, these, these change quite a bit. And this is the one for Council Rock. The yellow section down at the bottom shows the new addition, and then we've broken up the different wings into different phases of work. And the lower section, the blue right above the addition, we'll try to do that in the first summer while we're doing the addition. And then the section up above, the brown section, we'll use that, new space for swing space, and we're constantly moving around so that we can get the work done as quickly as possible. So, and the one portion that the administrators are never going to like is our job is to continually try to improve this. So, refine spaces where we can do work early, not impact the programs. That will, that's what we'll be coming to the district to do. Some progress photos. This was the new block and brick wall in the courtyard over at the middle school that the chillers are located inside of this structure. This is what it looks like now that it's complete. This is underneath it in the basement. We got all new piping, new controls, just upgrading the system. This is looking down into that enclosure. Those are the two new chiller units that were installed. This is over at the building and grounds garage. This was as we were excavating and putting the new oil separator in there. And this just makes sure that the operations are compliant with all the DEC regulations and we're capturing any oils or greases that can't go into the system. This is what the finished product looks like with the cover over the interceptor. This is one shot of the solar array that was installed on the south wall of the high school, just above door 20. And that's another view more straight on. This is up on the roof at the high school. We've got the new EPDM roofing on the base, and those were one of the walls that we rebuilt. And this way, they're preparing it here before they put the stucco on to the final layer of protection. This was one of the sections out. It's just the other side of the south tennis court. As we were working on the drainage for the tennis court, we found this section was broken. So, this is something that got replaced in the course of the other work. This is a view from the top of the high school of the south tennis court with the new surfaces painted on. This is a shot of the overspray, overspray protection that they put down. That plastic covered the first 20 yards inside the field so that they didn't get any overspray from the rubber application on the new turf field. And this is that, what they called the black mat, which was the base for the new running track. And this is the same picture after it had the two coats of rubber sprayed on. That rectangular box in the D-zone, those are probably eight individual aluminum covers that cover the long jump pits. There's one of those at each end of that D-zone, and they got the same application so they blend in pretty nicely with the running track. This is just a view from up on the roof of when they were putting the new turf field down. You see the new rubber mat underneath. And it was, this is the first field that I've done, and it was very interesting for me as they laid those long strips of turf down, the sewing machine that two guys rode on. And it's just like at home. You make the seam, sew it, and fold it over and go on to the next one. So, it was quite the process. This is a shot of the north tennis courts. And just another shot, this kind of shows the pole vault approach in the background And I'm ready for any questions, if anybody has any.
Well, John, thanks for the update. I mean, we appreciate, I guess to the members of the community, first of all, we anticipate, as we've talked about from the beginning, of phasing of this, all of the project, if you will. I know most folks are many, community members are focused on the Council Rock portion, which is certainly the largest. But as we've explained to folks and as they can find online, there are many, many projects that are part of this project. So, we appreciate your work on a daily, hourly basis, and we look forward to continuing the update process to the board and also then certainly thereby to the public as we move forward over the next, what will end up being about a three-year-plus period. So, thank you very much. And you've got the right people. You're involved daily. Larry Davis, as you well know, but many of the public may not. Larry Davis, one of our board members, is part of the committee that meets on a regular basis and reviews every detail. So, we do get feedback through that process also. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to take a couple of minutes to explain one other piece of the project and thank, certainly thank our entire team for their work over the summer and the work that's ongoing with Council Rock that we haven't seen up to this point. One of the things that's critically important to the district throughout this process is transparency and the financial impact of this particular project. So, one of the services that campus plays a role in, not only accounting for the costs that John was just talking about and the issues that are coming up, but they're also helping us measure where we are long-term, doing those forecasts, evaluating the bid market. And one of the topics we've been discussing, I've been kind of laying the groundwork for over the last couple of meetings, is our observations about the construction market and the volatility in the market as of late and what, what the impact that may have on the project long-term. So, I just wanted to, in full disclosure, share with you some of, some of our projections, where we think we are, where we think we may be heading, in hopes that it prompts further discussion and helps us look at, look at some things. So, what this is, is a more detailed budget, and what it outlines is, if I can use the pointer here, it shows what our referendum budget was. So, this is the $64.9 million. This is based on the information that we had at the time of referendum. And remember that we are not allowed to spend any money until the voter is actually authorized. So, everything was based on high-level conceptual design, square footage costs and things like that. And then at each level of the construction development, we get a little bit more detail to our architect, or the architects give a little more detail to the construction manager. We start fine-tuning those cost estimates and really drill down into where the project is. So, in this, we're showing from, from referendum and within the next couple of weeks, some of the feedback that we heard when we were vetting the Brookside option and we were vetting the Council Rock option, is people were asking us, all right, is Brookside still on the table? Are we still looking at that for future planning? And part of our decision process was, no, we want Council Rock to be our primary school. We're committed to Council Rock. And with that, we realized that we had to make some contingencies with that if enrollment, if our enrollment projections aren't as accurate as we, we hope that they are. So, one of the discussions that came up during the, you know, the, the listening phase of the project was, are you going to make Council Rock a second story? So, we made the decision very early in the process, from the pre-referendum to the schematic design, all right, we need to make that investment now. This is our opportunity to improve the infrastructure, to expand the HVAC systems. So, if we ever needed to expand on Council Rock and go up in a future phase to accommodate enrollment, then we're going to be ready. Right now, Council Rock is not ready. That's not an option for us. But we wanted to make that prudent investment. We also started to learn more about the site, and we started to engineer the project. And there was some overages that were developing early on in the project at Council Rock. So, Council Rock, the initial construction allocation was $24.1 million. When we started having those discussions and making sure that we were making prudent investment in the Council Rock site, so it is a long-term viable option for us, we added some costs projected at that point in time, increasing it to $25.6 million. Got more details, continued to develop the program, to continue to design the space. And we were pretty close going into the design development, which is about the January timeframe. Still trending a little bit over, but we wanted to see where we were in the total project. Some of the other projects were trending favorably. Some decisions we made related to scope were trending favorably. And then we got to the SED submission, which is about the March-April timeframe. And that's when the market volatility really started to, to occur. So, campus and SWBR independently looked at our estimates, looked at our program, looked at the specifications as they have been developed, and the budget increased to $29.8 million at Council Rock. So, that's showing a $5.7 million overage before we, we go out to bid. Why that's important is because Council Rock at the outset was already over the maximum cost allowance. So, any additional amount over what was presented to the community may have a tax impact. So, the $144 that we marketed as part of the tax impact analysis of this project is at risk with the budget overages due to the market conditions, due to the labor, changes in the labor markets, due to some of the, the design elements which we're working on value engineering. So, that's an important piece of it that I just wanted to disclose and say that we need to have some more conversation about that. In anticipation of the market volatility, the Board of Education did authorize a $1.5 million transfer to the capital fund and also authorized an additional $1 million to the capital reserve fund earmarking it for potential overages. So, of that $5.7 million, $2.5 million of it is funded today. And we also have capital reserves, should we have voter authorization to withdraw those, can cover the full project overage of the $3.6 million. And then we would work on a financial plan to replenish those. So, I just want to be very transparent about that, show, be very open with our reserve balances, how we're trying to develop a financing plan that honors that tax impact that we presented to the voters when they voted on, on this particular project. Just a little disaggregation of that $5.7 million and how we're looking at it as an owner, architect, engineer, and construction management team. We're looking at the cafeteria and the entrance and some of the budget overages that are reflected on the, I'm sorry, on the right-hand side. So, the cafeteria and the entranceway, $620,000 approximately. Again, new construction there. We're adding some square footage. We're reconfiguring that space. Heavy reliance on a GC contract, which is where we're experiencing the most market volatility in, in that regard. The classroom addition, we presented a program with 14 classrooms. We recommended at the onset the square footage that we think it's going to take to accommodate a full-day kindergarten program and also address some of the space constraints that already exist in Council Rock. So, that new square footage, new construction with the market volatility is trending $2.8 million over. So, when we're looking at value engineering options and we're looking at possible reductions, you know, this is an area where we're just looking at square footage and the classroom additions, not something that I could recommend with confidence, having confidence in the enrollment projections, that would be contradictory. So, then we look at some of the other wide systems, and we look at the cafeteria and the kitchen, $1.4 million. Again, that's new construction, adding square footage to bump out the cafeteria, make that a cafeterium so that we can invest in the, in the media center within Council Rock and reconfigure the main office space. So, you see where that's trending with that new construction, that in conjunction with the media center, close to, close to $2 million over. So, you're looking at program elements, and there's not something that's jumping out saying, all right, this is something we can easily scale back. We are value engineering each of the decisions that are made in the, the square footage, so lighting elements, the design elements, the, kind of the features and fixtures that have been programmed. We're critically evaluating those to save as much money as possible. But some of the larger program piece of it, the only option that we're looking at is the kitchen option and examining the feasibility if we were to defer the expansion of the, the cafeteria. That's something that we're looking at, but it's not something I could present as, as a viable option right now because there would be significant consequences to that, whether it be compromising on the cafeterium concept, narrowing the seating capacity. There's consequences for every decision that we would make at this point to scale back the program. But I want the board to have confidence, I want the public to have confidence that we're, we're looking at, looking at every element, trying to do the best we can to, to manage, you know, the market conditions that we're experiencing right now and to honor that tax impact, most importantly, whether it's through design decisions, whether it's through a prudent financial plan that sets us still, sets us up for Phase Three of the project. We're looking at all those elements, and I hope to have, you know, more comprehensive for the board at future meetings, comprehensive plan for the board's consideration at future meetings.
Lou, just a clarification question and then a couple of other questions. But you mentioned when you talked about the original, total original budget package, if you will, for Council Rock, that it was already over the SED allocated amount.
Correct.
Could you explain that? Is that a square footage calculation? Is it a formula calculation?
Yes. Yes. And so, the state has a formula.
What I'm trying to get at too is, as part of your explanation, it's not already over because of some sort of a Taj Mahal-type idea that we had.
No, no, no. No, the, the state formula, they assign building aid units to square footage. And they say, if you're going to run a basic, and I can say this because this is when the guidance came out, 1970s classroom, this is how many students we would expect in each classroom. It does not consider specials. It does not consider pull-out services, square footage for that. It has a very archaic formula that, based on the square footage and, you know, up to 30 students in a classroom at 770 square foot, that's what they're going to aid you. So, we knew going into it that the classroom sizes that we desired to meet our program space, the number of classrooms that we needed and our, you know, our target class sizes, we were over that cost allowance. So, we presented at the onset that we were about, if you recall at Brookside, we were about 38% viability. This project was about 60% needable, and then you apply a reimbursement rate of 70%. So, we knew that going in, and that's where the local, the local share came in that we were very transparent about upfront.
It's inherent in the It's inherent in the formula based on standards that are decades old, and it is what it is. It applies to everybody in New York State.
Right. So we're trying to obviously maximize those as much as possible. We went and visited SED to find every opportunity to identify building aid units so we can get, so we can apply that reimbursement, maximize the reimbursement rate.
Well, I guess, you know, and the board has had this information just very recently, and Julene and I have discussed with Kevin at our last agenda meeting, some of the elements of this. And, you know, there's more to come. I guess, from the board's standpoint, we sincerely appreciate everyone's efforts, our architects, engineers, certainly our construction management folks, but also those that we've engaged to assist us in terms of financial matters, let's say, if you will, that the importance of building to budget wherever we possibly can, and then knowing in a transparent way, step by step along the way, where we have some issues that are at risk or decisions have to be made. So that part of it, folks have been great about that. We appreciate that. We look forward to that on a more regular basis as everything ramps up. And then we will be prepared as a group to act on your recommendation to Kevin and Kevin's recommendations and have some very serious conversations about what it is we're building and what it is that's going to cost. So I do think that as soon as it's possible, putting together for us as detailed as you can be, options, alternatives, ways forward for us to consider would be in everybody's best interest. So we'll continue to do that. I mean, we want to, I think the intention is to build Council Rock the way we intend to build it, to be a new building, a full K-2 building, and to make it work for the community and for the school population there, so.
We'll bring that back to you at the next meeting. We'll go through that.
Does anybody else have any thoughts they want to share at this point? Okay. Lots more conversation to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To the members of the team that came this evening, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time this evening to come. And we'll see you again and often, so we know that going forward. Okay. Next item of business this evening, board, may we have a motion for approval of an amendment to our food, services, employment, terms, and conditions, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Julene, seconded by Karen. This is a memorandum. It's a contract amendment that you have had, we've had, to the arrangement that we have with our food service workers and cook managers, pretty clearly defined in that note, taking into account compensation, benefits, and time records and overtime policy amended for a number of issues that are laid out in there. So any further questions or comment? Does anybody have anything? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We also have back with us this evening, two different policies that we had previously approved first reads on. May we have a motion for approval of the second read for Policy 3010, Community Relations Section regarding therapy dogs.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Julene, seconded by Andrea. This is the one that always brings a smile to our face, the only policy in recent memory that everyone smiles when we talk about therapy dogs. Yeah, we had lengthy conversation about that. Things were well underway after some pilot work last year and some continuing efforts on that. And this was policy that was changed to allow the new practice. So anything further, questions?
No questions.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion, please, for approval of second read, Policy 1220, under our bylaws, Board of Education members, regarding nomination, election, and voting procedures.
So moved.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Julene. Again, we had discussion at our last meeting, I believe it was, on this policy, taking into account election law, election activities by members of the community. So we're updating policies in that regard. Does anyone have anything further than that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And then we also, sort of wrapping things up this evening, a consent agenda. May we have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Julene.
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. As it always is the case this time of the year, many fundraising activities. But we also have a number of gifts this evening we would like to formally acknowledge, including a gift from Nancy Talbot to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of a Salmer saxophone and a cone guitar, a grant in the amount of $500 from the Brighton Education Fund to the Brighton High School AP Environmental Science Fall Field Trip to allow additional stops on the trip, a grant in the amount of $2,900 from the Brighton Education Fund to Technology and Art Departments for their new course, Understanding Design and Technology, and art classes that use computer aided design, a gift from Helen Miller to Visual and Performing Arts Department to provide a $50 donation to the Dennis Miller Scholarship Fund and honor the late Arthur L. Miller. And then also, a bit unusual, but a very generous grant from the Rochester Area Community Foundation, an amount of $5,000 to the district that was made possible actually through an anonymous component fund of the community foundation and represents the philanthropic interests of an anonymous donor. So whoever that may be, we thank them, and we appreciate RACF and their work in passing it on to us.
So is that, I had, when I read that, I didn't really understand. So that money go to something very specific? Is that what they created?
That represents the donor's interest, which to list in the minutes or send a thank you would reveal the anonymity of the donor, perhaps.
Yeah, if you look, if you look at the letter, it actually does, in our packet, it does say the area of use to reflect the specific donor's interest, so that would...
But we're not going to find out what that is.
Not publicly, because again, it would, we're very appreciative of that.
Okay.
This is where we are, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board members, any other additional items of business or discussion for this evening? Dr. McGowan?
No, just a quick comment. Thank you again. Homecoming was a great success, the chamber, not to reiterate everything you said, but great community support and a great job in wrapping up several of the items around the project that needed to happen also. And so congratulations to our team that worked on that, and in particular Lou, who's done a great job, and our buildings and ground staff, Rob Lewis, John Novelli, Kevin Geisel, and our partners at campus as well. So we really appreciate all of that, and congratulations again to Carolyn. And that's all I have.
Yeah, you had a very good point. The, and to Tom and all of our assistant principals, the entire custodial staff, Nate Merritt, the campus looked magnificent. I mean, obviously with all the blue and the new track, the turf, the tennis courts, so all that work getting cleaned up, and it just really looked magnificent. It was a, just a, I think, a true source of community pride. So thank you for bringing that up again, too. We next meet on October 9th, here in this room. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Julene, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.